Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, February 6, 2023, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will start this meeting, as we do all of our meetings off, with a moment of silence. Madam President, could you lead us in the flag of allegiance? Please. I would like to remind everyone of our rules of civility and decorum. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Mr. Faun, are there any additions, leations, or organization of the agenda?
No, ma'am, there are not.
Very good. First item of business is Item 6.1. Proclaiming February 11 through 17, 2023, is 211 Awareness Week. I have a proclamation that will be accepted by Sharon LaRoe, President and CEO of 211 Palm Beach and Treasure Coast. The 211 Helpline and Crisis Line continues to serve as a beacon of hope for those in critical need of life-saving crisis support and guidance. This has been especially important during these last few years, dealing with COVID-19 and economic fluctuations. 211 also has specialized in community advocacy and support programs that include its life-sizing Sunshine daily phone calls to brighten the lives of isolated seniors and caregivers. I urge all residents to be aware that if they are overwhelmed and in crisis, or just need to talk, 211 is available 24/7. And so I, Keith James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, am hereby proclaiming February 11 through 17, 2023, as 211 Awareness Week. Sharon, you want to...
Thank you so much, Mayor, for that recognition, Commissioners and city staff.
We'll do the pictures of him.
All right.
All right, there you go. And that's for you? Oh, yeah, yeah. Say if you want.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor. As you mentioned in the proclamation, 211 is the only 24/7 crisis line and helpline serving this entire region. Last year, we responded to over 125,000 requests for help. So these requests cover a variety of different kinds of challenges and problems that people are facing, from moms who might be worried about a child who's being teased, to worries about their development, someone struggling with substance abuse, worried about how to pay their light bill, all the way up to people who are actively thinking about ending their own life. Here in the city of West Palm Beach, last year alone, we communicated with 22,000 requests for help from individuals who identified as West Palm residents. Of those, over 300 were people who were thinking about ending their own life. So that's almost one every single day. And although the numbers are stark, the reality is, is that's 300 times that our team was there and cared and talked to people through their darkest moments, so that they could move on to a brighter day. As also mentioned in the proclamation, people can reach us not only by dialing 211, but also dialing the National Suicide Lifeline number. And as there's been a lot of public awareness around that change of number, it's now the easy-to-remember 988. That launched in July. And so since that launched, volume on that line has increased by 60%. Given all of these challenges, we are expanding, we've added staff, and we are embarking on a process to build a new headquarters facility. So we are, stay tuned for information on that. And I just wanted to say again, in closing, with those quick comments, thank you so much for your ongoing support and for helping to make sure that everyone knows that when they need help or support, that our caring team is there anytime they need us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now have presentations from a couple of our school board members, District 4 and District 7.
Good afternoon. It's absolutely my pleasure to be here this morning, or this afternoon. I'm Erica Whitfield, and today I actually have our brand-new school board member, Edwin Ferguson, who's here, and he'll be sharing this time with me. So I'll do a little bit, five minutes, he'll do five minutes. If you remember last year when we did this, we did an hour and a half with Dr. Robinson and Alex Ayala and myself, so not going to be as tortured this year, it'll be much quicker. But I do want to cover, this is something that I try to do every year at all my cities. I really want to do a state of the schools and give you all an opportunity to ask questions as the City Commission to your school board members who represent your community. Unfortunately, Ms. Ayala wasn't able to be here today, but obviously she's available for you as well, if you have any concerns or questions. The school district has had a better year this year. I'll say that this is probably going to be the theme of my, of my talk today, is that we're doing a little better than we were last year. Post-COVID things were, were a little tough. We've changed our mission, we've changed our vision during that time. The mission now is to educate, affirm, and inspire all the children of the school district in an equity-embedded environment. And this is very important, and it really resonates through everything that we do. One of the other things that we added in after our mission, vision, and equity statement was our core beliefs, and I just want to read these for you, because I think they're really important. We believe every student can learn and is capable of growth and success. Every student is deserving of programs and opportunities that match their needs and interests, that we all have a role in this success, which I believe includes our municipalities, including yourselves. High expectations for both students and employees will promote high performance. Investing in our employees is an investment in their ability to serve our students. Diversity makes our community stronger and will be celebrated and fostered. And Palm Beach County schools are the community's best choice, and we must prove that every day with our unwavering commitment to prioritizing the needs of our students. We just developed a new strategic plan this past year. I won't belabor it, but there's four themes within it. Academic excellence and growth, which is why we exist. A student-focused culture, we really work on community service, that was a lot of the concerns that came out during the pandemic, was around whether or not we were focused on children, and we are, and so we've put that as a strategic theme right now. Mental health and wellness, which was something that came out post-Douglas, has also come out very heavily post-pandemic, and so I'll mention that very, very briefly. And then committed and impactful employees. So I brought data on all of the schools in this area. I actually only have two. Mr. Ferguson's going to talk about his schools, but the things that I think that you need to know is that mostly during the pandemic, pre-pandemic, we were here, during the pandemic, we went down here, and now we're on our way back up. So if you look at the, at the scores of our students, they were hit pretty hard. Distance learning was almost impossible. We did it, we did the best we could. We actually did better than most people in the country, because we kept our schools open. But even saying that, we did have a bit of a hit during that time. Science has been particularly difficult within our school system, so a lot of the scores that you're going to see around science have still had a bit of a hard time. Mostly, it's because we focus a lot more effort on reading and math, because we only get so much time with our children. But that being said, we are putting a lot of effort and focus around science this year. We say this every year, but we're doing a lot more around field trips. We actually have the Cox Science Center, located in, in the fair town of West Palm Beach, is actually heading up our STEM Council, so that's a really good opportunity for us to use our partners in the community to really tackle that. And then I want to talk about some of the other things that are really important, since I only have such a short amount of time within this system. Two things that we're doing that I think are important. We have our in-school and our out-of-school suspensions. We track that. And post-COVID, everybody was worried, because our students were acting up a lot. They were not really used to being in a building or having to follow rules. So there was a big hit with people having more suspensions, in-school suspensions, and then out-of-school suspensions, is what we call the different options, if you're still there or you're not. Those have actually mostly decreased since pandemic, so that's been wonderful. I'm really happy to hear that. And then the other thing that's really important, this past year, we really focused on that part where we say that every student can succeed, every student has the ability to excel. We're actually asking all of our elementary principals, as a student goes into middle school, that beyond just their test scores, you can recommend them for advanced placement classes. So when we are looking at what the students can achieve, and we're seeing them as fifth graders or as eighth graders going into ninth grade, the principal has a say in whether or not they are recommended for advanced placement classes or not. By and large, the children who are placed in advanced placement classes are actually achieving that higher goal that we're setting for them, and so we're seeing that is actually working throughout the district. So just so you know, these are West Palm Beach elementary schools going into middle school. And then we also disaggregate the data, which is really important. That's what we learned from Dr. Robinson, disaggregate, disaggregate, disaggregate. So we still do it, even though she's not with us right now. So our white students were always being placed in those higher classes, but we're actually seeing even more now that they are being tracked. So we had, with advanced, 58.6% were recommended at middle school level to go into a higher class, 22.9% were advanced with additional supports given, because we know that some kids can make it if they get extra help. Our Hispanic students, 28.6 and 20.5, which is right over 50%, and then our black students, same thing, 34.3% and 19.7%, those are our black students. So in all of the subgroups, more than half of the students are being recommended for advanced placement into higher programs within the school system. And that's really important, because it's not always about, you know, the score you got on the test, it's what you can achieve and what we believe in you can do. I'll just mention, since we just had our 211 professionals here and talking about mental health, we actually have post-referendum, we were able to put mental health providers into our schools. We have, this past year to date, so starting in August to now, 14,883 students have received services for mental health programs within the schools. The number of interventions provided, 111,237, that's to February 1st is what the date is. So those dollars that you all gave us to work on mental health, it is happening. We also have co-located mental health providers, those are the outside organizations that come into our schools. We have 16,926 individual counseling sessions provided, and then the number of students with the co-located people, 1,895. So those things are really happening. I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to my amazing colleague. There are a few other questions, things that I could bring up, like our legislative priorities, so if there's any time after he speaks, I'd love to talk to you about that, but I don't want to take away from his time, so I will introduce to you Mr. Edwin Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Administrator, City Commissioners. I'm Edwin Ferguson. For those of you who don't know, I'm your District 7 representative. It's, it's especially great for me to be here as a child of West Palm Beach. Many of you know that I was raised just west of I-95 in a community known as Spencer Lake. So again, it's very refreshing to see one of our product maturing to a point to be engaged in local government. So any children who are watching this, I would encourage you to shoot for the stars, and I'm sure you can do much better than me, but if I can do it, you can most definitely do it too. So in my five minutes, I just want to give you all a quick summary of the 11 schools in, in West Palm Beach that are in District 7. The majority of the schools in West Palm Beach are actually in my district. So in regard to the areas that we test, social studies, English, language arts, science, and math, most of the schools have shown gains from year, school year 2021 to school year 2022. In fact, in regard to social studies, it looks like Palm Beach Lakes and Roosevelt Middle did the best in relation to what their scores were in 2021, vis-à-vis what their scores were in 2022. So kudos to them for that. In regard to ELA, we test from grades three up through grades 10. Palm Beach Lakes, again, showed improvement from the ninth grade in 2021 to 2022, as well as in the 10th grade, so Mr. Alfonso and his team, it appears they're doing a good job there. The same for Roosevelt. And it was fairly flat in grade six and seven, but I did see a nine-point gain in the eighth grade again from 21 to 2022. Westward Elementary was kind of a mixed bag, frankly, when I was looking at the schools. Some schools were down, some schools were up. It looked, it appears that all schools in third grade from year 2021 to 2022 showed a drop-off, but some schools actually showed an increase in fourth grade, some showed an increase in fifth grade, so there was really no rhyme or reason to that. I have to get with staff to figure out what else we can do as, as a board and as a community to help kind of stabilize that, that ascension amongst the grades. As far as science goes, the majority of schools showed improvement from years 2021 to year 2022. In fact, North Borough showed a 15% hike, which is, which is awesome. Pleasant City was at 8%. Roosevelt Middle School was at 12%. And Palm Beach Lakes, again, Mr. Alfonso and his team must be doing something good over there at Palm Beach Lakes. We saw a growth there as well. Now, in terms of general needs, what you also know is that I've visited all of my schools in District 7. I have the largest district by, by number of schools, 34, 11 of which are here in District 7. I've visited all of those schools within the first 30 days, not just to say, hey, look, look what I can do, but to have a dialogue with the principals. Couple of things that I'm asking for you as, as stakeholders in, in the West Palm Beach educational system as well is the following. We need more resources, and I know you're thinking that I'm just asking you to stroke a check. I am asking you to stroke a check, Mr. Mayor, but not a particularly big one. What I'm asking of the community is to be more engaged in the, in the, in the educational process at the school. So we need more mentors, we need persons that should show up for the dance recitals or in the middle school and high school, the athletic games, just to show them, hey, we really care about you. You know, you're just not some student that we're sending off to this school, and hopefully you get it, we really care about your growth and your well-being. So being there and being present and being intentional, I think will have a lot, there's an intangible gain that has been missed in years past, and I know that you all and everybody here can help in that aspect. Also, in regard to education, it's not just the responsibility of the school district to educate our children, it's our responsibility to educate our children. So I'm calling on all the churches, community centers, PAL, what have you. If you make contact with a child, you should be trying to give them something positive, something to uplift them, because I don't want to cite, cite to all of your resumes, but I've listened very intently, and I know some of you have had rough roads when you came up as, as youth, and now you're here on this dais. So again, if you can do it, many of our hundreds and tens of thousands of children here in West Palm Beach can do it as well. I would like to go back to the money, though. So most of you know that I'm really, really passionate about, there's a correlation between early childhood education. Children who start behind tend to stay behind, and those who start ahead tend to stay ahead. Unfortunately, a disproportionate amount of our young children going to kindergarten, and they're not kindergarten-ready, and it plays out throughout their K through 12 experience. So what I'm calling on from the private community is for us to pool our monies together to increase the number of district-run pre-K3 and pre-K4 units at our elementary schools, because there is definitely a correlation between a greater number of children being in those, in those spaces and future success inside the schools. And I'm pretty sure I'm not, yep, not quite, oh, I'm over, I'm sorry, five minutes and 22 seconds, so I'll stop talking now, if you have any questions. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all, and I'll be up here again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Ms. Whitfield and Mr. Ferguson, for all that you do in your capacity as school board members. We appreciate it. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much, both of you, for being here and presenting to us. Two things I just wanted to say is, I know in that hour and a half presentation that we got a few years ago, one of the things that I saw as a positive that came out of it was a great dialogue on some of the infrastructure needs that the city was able to look into, modernizing some of our crosswalks and things like that. So I just, I want to keep that line of communication open, if there's any of those needs at your schools, that you make us aware of those. And then the second is, I really appreciate hearing the gains that we're making in our schools post-COVID now, and I'm just curious if you could just briefly touch on, you know, any of the plans or high-level goals as far as training for the principals and the teachers, because I know we've, at least in the schools in my area, we've had some changes in leadership, and I know that the success of our students heavily depends on their teachers and principals.
Thank you so much. I'll take the first part of your question, and if Mr. Ferguson wants to jump in on the second, I'll let him. As far as infrastructure, I still haven't completely let go the idea of working on Forest Hill High School. I think it's really a gem that we have here in our city, and Commissioner Lambert and I live very close to it. It's, it's a place that people want to send their children. So we're currently working on boundaries and how we can move some children over to John I to be able to relieve some of the overcrowding there. But I think we have a, a kind of a golden opportunity while we still have funds available from our most recent halfpenny sales tax, we got half of that, to work to improve that school, to create more space. But I think we will need continued support from West Palm Beach. I know you all have helped us so much by giving a section of land from the golf course. That was amazing, and thank God for that, so we've had parking for these students and teachers that have been there. But I think we need to continue those conversations, so I'd be very open to having that conversation with you to talk about how we can even make the school a better place. We, we still need even more parking, obviously we can't afford a parking garage, and I would love to see us, we have funding currently in the budget for, well, it was a three-story building, we'll see how much it actually, the money goes to now, but we do have funding for an additional building on that property, and I think it would relieve some of that crowding that you're seeing at Forest Hill, and keep the local families being able to participate. Do you want to talk about training?
I can. Sure. So what I know so far, I'm not quite three months in, Commissioner Lambert, but the district has been really engaged with the administrators and the teachers to make sure that they have the wraparound services that they need, because a lot of teachers are expressing a sense of being overwhelmed coming out of COVID as well. They had, they had a drop-off in some ways as well. So I know the district is trying to allot more monies toward giving them extra time for professional development and things of that nature. If you have somewhere to add, feel free.
All I would say is, I think that we're really fortunate that we have so many new, excited, like energized principals that are in these positions, and I, I just absolutely love it. I know people love Dreyfus, but I'm absolutely obsessed with the new principal there. She's done such a great job of bringing kind of the excitement back to Dreyfus, which I think is awesome. And then we've seen, like, my, my other school just got a new principal too, South Olive, I only have two in West Palm Beach. But to see the energy that they bring with them, I think it brings a lot of excitement to the schools and hopefully a renewed interest in participating in those schools. Our, our professional development has definitely ratcheted up. The requirements from the state are higher than they've ever been. The amount of testing that we have to do, unfortunately, it didn't work out the way we thought it would legislatively. We were imagining, from the way that they were talking, that we would have less testing, but we're just testing three times a year, and the final test is still the one that has the, the heavy burden, so this will be our first year doing that. So we're going to see how that works out with, with our scores and with our grades, with our schools. So there's a lot of, a lot of stress still around the big test and how, and how we deal with that as a school system. But I think, you know, putting these teachers and these principals and giving them every resource is actually, it's a huge priority for us, so we're going to have to continue going with that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Just, I just want to say thank you for bringing up caring for and loving on our teachers as well. I think that that's huge, and I want to offer this up as a suggestion, because I know that some of the neighborhood associations do adopt not only the schools but the teachers and kind of do a teacher appreciation, working with local coffee shops who might donate some crafts of coffee and bringing it around to their classrooms. I literally get chills thinking about how appreciative those teachers were when some of the neighborhoods did that, so thank you so much for bringing that up.
We have a program in South County that I, that I love, and I think we should all model after, it's called Roots and Wings. It's in Delray Beach, Boynton and Boca, which are also my communities, and they actually go around and recognize from this organization to each one of the schools, and they give out little gift bags with donations from their local restaurants and businesses, and it's actually gotten up to over $1,000 in, like, gift cards and, and there's actually a little bit of cash in there too, in a bag that they give to them, and they let the, the other teachers say who deserves it the most, so they do two every semester or so per school. And the, the teachers are so excited to be recognized and to have somebody really care about the work that they're doing, and so if West Palm would be interested in taking that on, it can make the connection, and you all can talk to him about how, how he started that.
But I am happy to report that under my administration, for the first time, we've taken money out of our general fund and also CRA dollars to actually provide grants to all of the elementary schools in the city. It wasn't a lot, but we're hoping to increase that as years go by, but I think it's important for us as the city to, to have some skin in the game. I know it's not big of a check, as you would like, Mr. Ferguson, but we'll have further conversations down the road. Anything, any other questions, commissioners, comments? All right, well, again, thank you both very much for your service, we truly appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we now come to the consent counter, items 8.1 through 8.9. We have any cards on either of those? We do have a card, well, first of all, let me see if there are any comments or questions from the commissioners on consent, 8.1 to 8.9. Okay, we do have a card on 8.4 from Michael Cleveland.
All right, yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. I just want to bring it up again, particularly since there were school district members here, they've probably left already. My suggestion and request to have a walk crossover with Palm Beach Lakes that will connect the north side with the south side of the Gulf Avenue, as well as provide a more safety pathway for students to go to school. Just wanted to find out, has there been any consideration in that suggestion? Okay.
Thank you very much. Anything else on commit, commissioners, comment, I mean, on consent? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded discussion. Hearing no comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5029-22, approving an agreement for purchase and sale of 8111 South Dixie Highway to Woodfield Flagler Venture LLC, a joint venture entity created by Flagler Realty and Development, Inc., and Woodfield Development Company. Ms. Fariale?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, Jennifer Fariale, Director of Housing and Community Development. This is the second hearing of this ordinance, in which we received unanimous approval on January 23, 2023, last City Commission meeting. However, I am going to highlight, there have been, there are no changes, I'm sorry, to the agreement and to what has been originally presented, but I am going to highlight just some of our previous community engagement efforts and what community engagement efforts we have moving forward. I do want to point out that after the property was purchased in 2012, and I believe, Mayor, you were the only elected official that was in this body, that was part of the, of the City Commission at the time, there were previous, there were numerous actions that we took in order to get feedback from the residents to ensure that that feedback was incorporated in the future development of the site. There was a technical assistance panel that was established with Urban Land Institute. There were previous, multiple implementation committees, including workshops and design analysis workshops, design surets, and some additional surveys that were taken to engage our residents. I do want to say that when we were preparing the invitation to negotiate for this solicitation, we did look back at all of this information from previous engagement efforts, and we did incorporate that into the invitation to negotiate, so we gathered all of that feedback and make sure that it was part of our, of our solicitation document. Before we came to you to obtain surplus, which in essence, that what gave us the authority to move forward with issuing, issuing this competitive proposal, we did have an in-person meeting with CNA representatives in September of 18, 2020, and we also had a virtual and in-person public meeting at the South Olive Community Center that was held on September 18, 2020. We conducted some polling, and we wanted to ensure that we knew what the residents' concerns were and what ultimately they wanted to see on this site. After the City Commission made a determination of, or surplus determination and authorizes to move forward with developing the invitation to negotiate, we also provided additional or allowed the community to provide additional feedback on the goals of the ITN, the objectives of the ITN, and the process itself. We established a community engagement feedback email, in which we received various comments from the neighborhood and the residents. Once the invitation to negotiate was, in essence, published, and we did receive the proposals, there were two review committees that were established, one being an internal review committee, which was of city staff, and the other being a citizens' review committee, which consisted of seven members, one resident from each of the five commission districts, which were selected by the city commissioners, and then we had one South End resident selected by the mayor, and one business owner selected by the mayor. Again, these individuals had the opportunity to review. Again, these individuals had the opportunity to review the actual solicitations that were received and before they were considered by the city commission. After the city commission made or shortlisted their proposals, we also provided those proposals or published those proposals online and we allowed the residents to provide feedback on all of those proposals. They provided comments, considerations, and all of that was presented to the city commission when they made their decision on who they were going to select. Now that we have made a selection and as a part of our development agreement, the developer has two aspects that they need to adhere to. In section eight point five of the agreement, they have to obtain written approval from the city on how they're going to engage the residents on any progress on the project, construction issues, how they're going to provide information on job fairs, opportunities, or any other neighborhood issues. So they have to submit that plan to us. We have to review it, approve it, and ensure that they are being compliant with this aspect of the agreement. In addition to that, they also have to provide a community engagement plan on how they're going to do outreach with the residents in terms of job fairs, potential events, employment opportunities, housing opportunities, and they're also required to keep a project website as well. They have to submit that plan to the city. We review it. We ensure that they're being compliant with it. And that concludes this section of my presentation. Again, all the other terms and conditions on the agreement have not changed and I'm happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Very good. Any questions, comments, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. This is a very exciting day. I'm grateful that we have the opportunity to vote on the second, second reading of this. This clearly, as you've outlined, has been a very long and thorough process with the community. I want to thank everybody who participated in that, from the neighborhood associations to people across the city who read the proposals, who gave input. Also, just wanted to recognize city staff, you reminded me about, you know, that it was fairly early on during COVID that we scrambled to say, how are we going to continue getting community input? And so I think this was the first project that we implemented, the digital polling, as well as having an in-person and digital version of that Zoom meeting to allow everybody to have input. And I just, you know, want to say thank you to everybody for those efforts to do that because I think that this is a long time coming and I think we're all very excited that this is moving forward. I wanted to bring up just a few items that I think we all received via public comment at our last commission meeting and to discuss with my colleagues some options here. But the first one was a request for input on the concept plan, but I think you have addressed that and maybe if you want to pull up that slide again about the community engagement, if you could talk a little bit about, a little bit more about the community's ability to give input on the plan. I guess it says here the project process.
Right, yes, Commissioner. So as, as I want to remind you that within six months, I believe, of issuance of this agreement, the developer has to come back and present the final concept plan to you. So you still have the, you have the option or you will have the option to further review the site plan. I'm sure that the developer, and I believe they have hired a party to assist with community engagement, they're going to continue to engage the residents in this process. You're going to have the opportunity again to review that site plan and that is before they even start the entitlement process with development services and get all the government approvals that they need. So there's going to be more opportunities for the residents to be involved and that is stated in the agreement. And again, they will, they will come to you numerous times before the final concept plan is approved.
Okay, great. And then I think you said that we'll get this written plan. Will you be able to share that with us as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other, the second item that was brought up was funding to be redirected to the South Dixie Corridor related to this project. I know we had some discussion at agenda review about this and I'm just wondering if maybe the city attorney can address this again as, as far as the funding that we're receiving now versus the funding that we're receiving when the sale is final, which my understanding is two years from now?
I can address that, that question. So based on the agreement, the developer has to provide a two million dollar upfront lease payment. So that is due ten days after we execute this agreement. The remainder of the, of the proceeds from that sale or the remainder of the dollars are due at CO or at closing, which won't take place until around twenty twenty-six. And again, the reason why we did that is because we wanted to ensure that the developer, that we had control of the property while the property was being developed. So we're not going to really see the remainder of the proceeds in terms of eight point five million until after twenty twenty-six or during twenty twenty-six or in that timeframe.
Okay. So one of the things that we have talked about on this dais before has been when there has been slum or blight in a neighborhood related to a home or a property that wasn't up to code or that wasn't developed. And we have, we have discussed and debated whether or not some of those funds should be kept for that area. I don't know that we ever have moved forward on that, but I do think that it's something that we should continue to consider, especially in areas that are not CRA districts. And, and much of the North Broadway, North End of South of Dixie is covered by the CRA and the North End, but South of Okeechobee is not covered. So while it may not be appropriate to discuss the funding at this time, I would love for us to make note of this for future discussion when we do receive the sale of the funds because I do think that the impact of this property, the impact of, of this in the area on South Dixie will be great and that they deserve to see some of those funds return back to that area as well. So.
Well, I, I would push back a little bit that they don't necessarily deserve to receive the funds. As part of the budget process, we prioritize projects throughout the city. This is a city asset and so we will continue to have these discussions along, when, when we were talking about budget and distribution of finances, but I don't want, you know, we, we could start, that could come back to bite us. If, if each project in a particular neighborhood yielded certain revenues, whether it's the North End or the South End, then, you know, with the X, to create the expectation that the revenues from that particular project would be devoted exclusively to that particular part of our city, I think would be a mistake. We, as we sit up here, when we compile our budget each and every year, we have very open and candid discussions about the priorities for those funds. Because, just because a particular project is in a certain city does not mean, in a certain part of our city, does not mean that there aren't needs in, in other parts of the city, which may have a greater priority as we look at it. So I don't want to land the expectation or create the expectation because this is a South End project, those funds have to be spent in the South End. There's a very good case that they could be, but I don't want to paint ourselves into a corner and commit to that until we look at the priorities from throughout the city, which is what the budget process is all about. But we could certainly have that conversation at, at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and that's what I request as well, is just that we give it consideration.
Absolutely.
So then the third item that was on this request was to allow for the developer to have more than the hundred and twenty days to secure a grocer. You know, and I went back and I reviewed my notes from the presentation when we had the economic development advisor talk to us about this property and we had some robust discussion about having a grocery store as an anchor. While I appreciate that we have Plan B, which is if we can't secure a grocer, that there is opportunity for other retail, I, I would like to ask for your support in extending that from one hundred and twenty days to one hundred and eighty days. Although I do understand at the, at the first reading, I asked the developer group and, and you all assured us that you hope to get it done even quicker than that, but I, I do think that we would like to extend the opportunity to give as much time as we can to make sure that that happens. And so I just ask if, if that's something that my colleagues would also support.
So was that request, a request from the developer for the hundred and twenty days or did we put that time constraint on the developer as, as the city?
That was mutually agreed upon when, during negotiations.
Commissioner Ward.
Is the language would be permitted, does that mean that they have to? I mean, obviously you need a big space for a grocer and so that one hundred and twenty day mark, that provides us with what options? Because, you know, the language in, in here obviously says would be permitted to divide it into two spaces.
Essentially, they have one hundred and twenty days from execution of the agreement to have to, to provide us with their commitment of a grocer. After the one hundred and twenty days, they move forward to a Plan B proposal, which allows them to provide an alternative retail use on the site. So they have one hundred and twenty days. If they don't comply with that, then they automatically move to option B.
I'd like to hear from the developer whether they have any reaction to that request.
Good evening again, Mayor, city commissioners. My name's Patrick Cantigan. Commissioner Lambert, thank you for that question. We believe the hundred and twenty will be ample. If we had the hundred and eighty, doesn't mean we have to use it. Our goal is to expedite this process and keep it going as quick as we can. So the developer has not made that request, but we would certainly, it would be well received and we don't have to use the whole hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you. So to the developer, it is your intention though to try to, to secure a grocer in this spot? That is your preferred of the two options?
That is our preferred and we are well underway with that.
I wouldn't have any objection to adding it either, the, the additional time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, how, that doesn't delay us to, to make that change before we sign the contract? Significant, no, there's significant delay?
We, we can certainly make that change within the contract once, once you approve the item before it's signed off on.
All right, so when a motion is made, we can, if there's consensus, Commissioner Lambert, if you want to incorporate that into your motion, we'll see what the votes are.
Thank you.
Were you finished with your questions, Commissioner?
That was it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, do we have any cards on this? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero two nine dash two-two on second reading with the change to section five point two to provide the developer a hundred and eighty days to obtain commitment by a grocery store tenant.
Second.
Been moved in second discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero two nine dash two-two, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, approving an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property with Woodfield Flagler Venture LLC for the sale of the city property located at eighty-one eleven South Dixie Highway, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I could just make one comment on behalf of Woodfield and Flagler. This remains a very exciting project for us. It's on the top of our priority list and we appreciate the faith and the confidence that you've put in us.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you, sir. Okay, item nine point two, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five zero three four dash twenty-three. A city initiated renaming of Iris Street to Alexander W. Dreyfus Way, located east of South Tamarind Avenue and west of South Sappadilla Avenue between Okeechobee Boulevard and Fern Street.
Mayor, Commissioner Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. There is one change since the first reading, which was just read out. The change was as requested at first reading. It is now going to be Alexander W. Dreyfus Way as opposed to Dreyfus Street. So that is the only change since first reading.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero three four dash twenty-three pursuant to section one seventy-seven dash one forty-two Florida statutes.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero three four dash two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, renaming a street known as Iris Street to Alexander W. Dreyfus Way, which is located east of South Tamarind Avenue and west of South Sappadilla Avenue and between Okeechobee Boulevard and Fern Street, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine point three, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero three one dash twenty-three, authorizing the conveyance of the twenty-five foot strip portion of five hundred Clematis to NL five one two LLC and approving the agreement for purchase and sale of a portion of five hundred Clematis Street for workforce housing among NL five one two LLC, the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, and the City of West Palm Beach. Ms. Ferrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. Jennifer Ferrell, Director of Housing and Community Development. This particular ordinance had an accompanying agenda item at the CRA board meeting. However, I'm just going to give a quick presentation for the purposes of having this, this group here seeing what we are proposing. On September sixteenth, resolution two four zero two-two declared that certain portions of city-owned property located at five hundred Clematis Street were not needed for city purposes and the city commission authorizes to move forward with the negotiations with the adjacent property owner. The city-owned property is a very small twenty-five foot wide strip of land with very little development capacity or economic purpose. Over the last several months, we have been negotiating with the adjacent owner on a future development of the adjacent site, which will consist of eighty-eight apartments and over forty-two thousand square feet of retail space. As a part of our negotiations for the use of this land, we were, have been able to negotiate with the developer thirteen units of affordable workforce housing, which will equal to fifty percent of the total units. The units will be income restricted for a period of twenty years and the developers will provide a first look program, which they will project, they will pre-market the projects' units to West Palm Beach employees for sixty days prior to making it available to the general public. In consideration for the workforce housing units, we are proposing for the purchase price for the site to be ten dollars and they are also receiving a CRA TIF and the amount of fifty percent of that increment not to exceed one point two million. With that said, Straff recommends approval of the ordinance and we are asking for the second reading to be scheduled for Monday, February twentieth. With that said, this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good. Any questions, comments, commissioners? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero three one dash twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero three one dash two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, authorizing the sale of a portion of five hundred Clematis Street, approving an agreement for purchase and sale of a portion of five hundred Clematis Street for workforce housing among NL five one two LLC, the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, and the City of West Palm Beach, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for comments from the public. I have several cards here. I'm going to read three names out and then we can, have you start making your way up toward the podium. Mark Robinson, Erica Wright, and William Gatto. Mark Robinson, Erica Wright, and William Gatto. It looks like Mr. Robinson does not wish to speak. His comment is, I support development, but ONW traffic, please don't take away from thirty, please direct traffic away from Thirty-third Street and move and more curb closure. So that's Mr. Robinson's comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Erica Wright. Are you Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you did want to speak.
Well, no, I didn't, but since you mentioned my name, I didn't know, so I thought I'd come up and, yeah, the point was, was, yeah.
Well, if you want to take your three minutes, sir, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thanks, thanks. Well, being a resident of Old Northwood and, and, you know, we love the idea of the development because we've all been, you know, begging for it and excited about it for many, many years. So this whole Broadway development is just crazily exciting for all of us, but the traffic coming through our historic neighborhood really has me concerned. So that's where I just beg of you to take a look at all that and really see all the number of cars that are going to come number of cars that are going to come through these narrow streets that I think will erode our historic, um, you know, what we realize and know as a historic neighborhood. So I just beg of you to take a look at that. We'd love to work with you. I would too, just to see options, but that's my thing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Erica Wright?
Hello. Um, my name's Erica Wright. I am a member of Old Northwood. I live at the end of Thirty-fourth Street on the Broadway Alley, or the Broadway Alley's right next to me, and, um, I am pro-development and pro, um, bringing, uh, the right amount of density to our area of Broadway. Um, we definitely can use a good boost in the improvement of Broadway, but bringing that residence to our community through the streets of Old Northwood, um, will hinder families that have their kids out riding their bikes. And the specific development that, um, that has been brought up is, um, the, the developer is very conscious. He has tried working with the city and he has worked with the city, but he, um, and he also worked with our community, and he worked very hard to get this development, and he is bringing not fifteen percent of affordable housing in, he's bringing in one hundred percent of affordable housing for nurses, for fire departments, for teachers, and we need more developers like him coming in, but we also need to make sure that that flow of traffic is not coming through Old Northwood. We can't, we can't support it. The families can't support it, and my big concern is if development keeps going forward the way this is, it's going to also affect all our property values, and we have all worked very hard in the north end to fight, to have a wonderful community, and we do have a wonderful community. I don't know if you noticed, but majority of the people in here are from Old Northwood.
All right, okay. What we're here for.
So, we, um, feel very strongly about our neighborhood, if you couldn't tell. Um, this was able to rally all of us together in just a few short days to get here and represent and let all of you know that, um, we are very committed to protecting the special relationship and the special community that we have in Old Northwood.
Okay. Thank you very much. William Gatto?
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the Commission. Thank you for your service to our community. Uh, my name is Bill Gatto. I'm a resident of Old Northwood. I live on, uh, Thirtieth Street and the, uh, the street formerly known as Point Setti App, but is now turned into a drag strip. Um, we have got a, uh, a traffic crisis that's taking place in our neighborhood. It's not something that is coming, it's not impending, it's here, and it's frightening, quite frankly. Um, we do have a prepared statement that I'm going to read, um, but I do want to start out by echoing the sentiments of our great neighbor, Erica Wright. You know, the explosive end mark as well, the, uh, the explosive and burgeoning development that's taking place in the north end is very exciting to us that have been here for a long, long time. We're, we welcome it, but the development needs to be commensurate with traffic planning, engineering, and mitigation, because we're talking about a neighborhood that was founded in the twenties and who we are a hundred years later, and, you know, the infrastructure development needs to be, uh, parallel with all of the buildings that are coming. And again, it's very, very exciting. So briefly, the letter that we've got is that, um, you know, the, uh, diverting the traffic from the Thirty-third and Broadway Avenue project that's currently planning to flow, um, into our neighborhood off of Broadway, we believe is a mistake, and then diverting the traffic of approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-five additional car trips per day through our neighborhood on Thirty-third Street from this one development alone will have a negative impact and change the character of our historic neighborhood. Uh, generally speaking, we support development, uh, on Broadway Avenue, and we support this particular project. In fact, the developer agrees with us that there should be an entrance to his development from Thirty-third Street and Broadway, provided that the globe cursor is moved from the sidewalk to the west side of the alley, preserving limited access as originally adopted by the Commission years ago, that these, our streets were closed years ago, and we have someone here that was there for that, and it was, um, quite impactful when those streets were closed. So we're opposed to opening them up again. Um, preserving the alley access for the neighborhood, traffic pickup, and emergency services, um, and allowing it to flow off of Broadway rather than through Old Northwood is the safest and best option. It's also the most logical resolution. It involves little cost, as the utility boxes that are there would not need to be moved and no sewage pipes would be impacted. The only cost would be moving the curb closure to the west side of the alley. We urge you to work with city staff, Old Northwood leadership, developer, and the FDOT to find a mutually agreeable resolution that preserves historic integrity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um... Mr. Fana or, or Madam City Attorney, is, when is, is this project coming before us, or is this something that we will consider at some point?
Yeah, no, Mayor Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. This, this project was already approved when we went through the site plan process, permitting process. Um, there's a couple issues that are being discussed here. One is the entrance of the parking gar, the parking lot in this case. Um, staff has looked into it and determined that the location that it was presented was the most appropriate location based on a couple of factors, including, um, Broadway itself has a, a lot of curb cuts and entrances coming in and out of it already. So as you add more traffic coming in and out of Broadway, there's more increased, uh, possibility of, of accidents occurring, but also there's, there's, uh, the road next to it has a block, it's been blocked out of Broadway as well. It's something that staff can still take a look at and working with the developer to see if there's other ways to, to accommodate the neighborhood, um, but based on the reviews that staff did previously, that was the best location.
Okay. All right, I'll call off three more names. Uh, Christopher Fernandez, Mitchell Zastro, and Bruce Ingram.
No, I said no. Zastro said no. No comments.
Zastro said no comment.
Any.
Okay, do not wish to speak, but he didn't write anything else. Okay. Uh, Christopher Fernandez?
Good afternoon, Mayor James and City Commissioners. My name is Christopher Fernandez, and I'm one of the business owners of the Miracle Leaf Clematis. I also run the daily operations of Miracle Leaf Clematis, and I've been doing so since our inception in two thousand and nineteen. A year or two ago, subculture group petitioned the businesses on the five hundred block to close the road on the weekend to allow restaurants to put more seating and for other various events. The petition was for a six-month trial period and would be reassessed after the six-month period ended. We were told that eighty-five percent of the businesses on the block had to agree in order for the city to approve of the weekend road closures. The six-month trial period came and went, and we were never asked again about the closures, but it persists to this day. The five hundred block road closures are very damaging to our business. As you know, one of the, parking is one of the main issues downtown faces when it comes to bringing people to the area. About a month ago, the parking department started closing the Clematis entrance to the Clematis parking garage due to public safety concerns with the railroad track because of the five hundred block road closures. Now the public is forced to come in from the Banyon entrance, which is in an odd location and is difficult to access at times. Our patients, many of which are elderly and need assistance walking, complain about this every single weekend while we're open for business. It is drastically hurting us and other businesses on the five hundred block of Clematis. I have personally spoken to other business owners on the five hundred block of Clematis, and many of them agree that the weekend closures hurt their business as well. During the day on the weekends, the street looks a mess. One of the very first things people see after getting off the bright line are tables and chairs strewn about haphazardly, a shoddy stage that looks like it could fall apart at any moment, and huge balloons that are constantly falling over, and almost no one even utilizes any of it. I would like to ask the city to reconsider opening the five hundred block of Clematis on the weekend to vehicular traffic again. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you very much. Uh, Bruce Ingram, and then Fiona Rawls?
No comments.
No comments? Was that Mr. Ingram? Okay. Fiona Rawls?
Thank you for having me, Ma, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to members of the dais. Um, I want to thank Mayor James for honoring the city workers. It saved that man's life who was trying to commit suicide. That's a big deal to me, too. Honoring the commitment to one another is how we restore the soul of our nation. The last time I spoke before this dais, I didn't know, uh, what was going to happen. Uh, the next morning, I woke up and watched the news, and I saw government in action. Uh, so I'm impressed and grateful. Our president says we have to do everything we can to restore the soul of our nation. The L.A. City Council has banned the thin blue line flag, and it's an easy commitment and an instant win that doesn't cost a dime. Ask this council to also ban the thin blue line flag from the West Palm Beach Police Department officers while in uniform. Now, the chief, uh, Chief Attarley recently met with community leaders looking for solutions while placing Officer Lordy on administrative leave. Now, he was placed on administrative leave because it was his fifth excessive force complaint. What happened to three strikes, you're out. Don't look for solutions as the head of Internal Affairs, just do your job. I met tons, I meet tons of rich men from Palm Beach through, uh, my online dating apps. Do you know the number one question I get asked from these men when I invite them over? Is it safe in your neighborhood? The same neighborhood where my temple is. Saturday afternoon, I heard a building alarm going off at that temple. I called the police, I told them, no one was there and the alarm was going off. Well, they declined to send a unit out, and it rained all night. When I looked at it the next morning, when the alarm was still going off, there was, there was visible damage to one of the windows. That's how things work here in West Palm Beach. I asked this council to consider a motion. Uh, there's a disturbing trend on the internet right now. People are loading batteries into shotgun shells. This is a violation of international chemical munitions law and an environmental disaster waiting to happen. I ask that anyone caught possessing or manufacturing any shotgun shell rounds with chemical, uh, loaded munitions be automatically charged with intent to commit a hate crime or some astronomical fine, or both. History requires us to be bold, to stand up and speak out when we know something is wrong. There's a genocide brewing in America and in Florida of transgender people. The Pope has come out and said it is a sin to criminalize homosexuality. Governor DeSantis's Sharia Christian values are more radical, uh, than we think when he declares that this is where woke people go to die. I won't be told I'm a danger to children when Sheriff Bradshaw has tried to have a child circumcised against her mother's wishes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're most certainly welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, uh, three more names. Hugh Johnson, Frank Hinsman, and Brian Dunn.
No comments.
Is that Mr. Johnson?
No comment.
Do you want me to read your statement?
No, I'll just...
Okay.
No problem. No better. Name is Frank Hinsman. I live at five sixteen Thirty-first Street. I bought my house in nineteen eighty-eight on the City of West Palm Beach, and even downtown was not much of anything. And we fought, you know, to get the streets closed off because of traffic along Broadway, and it's worked out pretty great, and now they're starting to develop those, and we're in favor of all the development to an extent. Um, but you gotta, you gotta move the street closure from, it's right on Broadway right now. If you moved it to the west side of the north-south alley, that would allow all the developers that come off of Broadway right into their new developments, whatever they're building. You got, when Lois Frankel was mayor, we brought her down and we physically went with her and a couple Commissioners up and down the streets to explain the situation, how it would affect our neighborhood. So if any of you want to come and meet the, the board and, and go down, physically look at what, because it's going to affect our neighborhood, we would appreciate it. I hope you understand what I'm talking about. Thanks.
Thank you. Hugh Johnson, uh, Mr. Johnson, he didn't want to speak?
No.
All right, he did have a statement there, which I'll read into the record. Uh, "Please work with city staff and Old Northwood leadership to direct traffic off Broadway and not through Old Northwood to keep Old Northwood streets safe and calm." That was his statement. Okay?
No comments. I'll let you watch your end.
Okay, his comment is, "Please work with all parties to find a mutually agreeable solution to the Old Northwood slash Thirty-third Street development issue." That's Mr. Dunn's comment. Okay. Reading three more cards. Uh, Tanyel TK, Kosh, TK, I apologize for missing out on your name. Uh, Tom Poole, and then Sandy Makovich. TK?
TK, Tanyel Koushakian, Tan the Man, Action Koushakian, whatever you prefer. Nice to see you, Mayor. Um, brought a couple of friends from Old Northwood, um, at four four one Thirty-second Street. And we, we're here to ask for your leadership on this issue, uh, which just simply requires moving, uh, a curb cut to the alley. Happy to show you and go into detail, uh, on this issue. Uh, the developer actually supports this. Um, I think it's something that can be resolved pretty quickly with input of city staff and yourself and Old Northwood residents. I think we can come to a pretty quick and easy resolution on this, uh, simply put, just moving the curb back and opening up that third, uh, Broadway, uh, entrance for that development, and what's probably going to be a development on the south side, too, that would benefit both of those, uh, future developments and preserve the integrity of Old Northwood as a historic neighborhood. And so we're looking forward to working with you, uh, and your staff in, in getting this done. Uh, but it has ignited, uh, a fire under the feet of the Old Northwood residents. Uh, we understand, uh, the process that was taken place by city staff, uh, and we have, uh, as a community, come together, uh, simply to demand and, uh, respectfully request your, your leadership and staff to work with us so we can come to a, a quick and amicable resolution on this, uh, that, again, preserves those, uh, those closures and the integrity of the neighborhood. So I'll stop it right there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, all right. Tom Poole?
No comment. I, I'm here at TK.
Okay, very good. Uh, Sandy Makovich?
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. Old Northwood has done this exactly right. They showed up, they spoke out. If one or two of them had come, they would have been troublemakers, paying, but when, when they come to you, like they did tonight with the number of them, letting you know their problem, I know you have, they have your ear. You're listening to them, you're paying attention. So, Old Northwood, good showing tonight.
Driving down here to come to this meeting tonight on Forty-Fifth Street, approached Australian Avenue, I think it's four or five lanes on Forty-Fifth Street, every lane was packed with cars, one after another.
Somewhere, I was in the right-hand lane, I was going to make a right turn. Behind me, on the left-hand side, I think he wanted to go straight ahead, was an ambulance. Lights flashing, the noise was unbearable. That poor guy sat there, he had nowhere to go because of the traffic. So he either had somebody in that ambulance trying to make the hospital, and you just hoped man or woman held on, or he was going to a residence to pick somebody up that needed medical attention. You hope they, they lasted long enough for the ambulance to get there. So when people are talking to you about traffic, listen to them. That could have been any one of you people that's sitting up there, that could have been a loved one of you sitting in the back of that ambulance and can't get to the hospital in time. Develop smartly. You did too much, too fast, and this, West Palm Beach is no better than Miami. To me, it's no better than Times Square's in New York. Good night, Keith.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Acura Amanda, Megan Wedgref, and Michael Cleveland.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Mayor James, I want to express my deepest gratitude to you. Thank you so much for referring my investigation against Deputy Chief Morris to the State Attorney Public Corruption Unit. First of all, let me explain two different facts of this investigation. When I was being interviewed by the Public Corruption Unit, I was able to give numerous names of individuals who were present when Morris paid this young man to take the test to finish his bachelor's degree. And those names are as followed. Joe Petuzzi. Lieutenant Greg Radeau with the West Palm Beach Police Department. Willie Perez. Rick Morris. Joe Iotto. Greg Key. And three other names that I will keep quiet for now. Furthermore, the next commission meeting, I will not be present because I want to give the Public Corruption Unit time to do its investigation. But buckle up, guys, because in four weeks, I will be back here, and I will bring a tape recording with me from the day this deal was made with Rick Morris and how he was joking on this tape on how he can get his degree this way. But we will cross that bridge when we get there. Mayor Keith James. This deputy chief needs to be relieved from duty pending his termination. It's only fair to demonstrate this to all the policemen and women that no matter what your rank is, you must abide by the ethics of law enforcement, no matter what your rank is. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Megan Wedgref, and Michael Cleveland, this is next.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Megan Wegriff. I live on 32nd Street. I'm here with my Old Northwood neighbors. As you can tell, we're a diverse community, and we're here to just ask respectfully that you work with us on our concerns, which have to do with traffic, safety, and compatibility with the development that's going to be happening on Broadway at 33rd and the future development that TK also raised as well. I've been in Old Northwood for about seven years now, and on the 32nd Street, just that one street. In the last three years, we've had six babies born, two more to be born this year, and other kids on that street. They are constantly out on the road, on their bikes, on scooters. We're walking them on strollers. And as already invited, you should come down and stand on Spruce and see the traffic that we deal with on a daily basis already. It is so fast, we have roundabouts there, but that doesn't deter people already moving at a very fast speed. I've personally helped people move their car off the roundabouts in the middle of the day when they are sober because they run over them. I've also had a person take out one of my coconut palms in the swale. And if that palm tree hadn't had been there, that car would have ran straight into my house. So I'm one street over from this 33rd development. Traffic is an issue. There's an easy solution that we've heard about would, to be allowed the cutout on Broadway. Unfortunately, I don't think Old Northwood was invited by the staffers to be part of this process, and they should have been, and they should be going forward. And we just ask that we can be brought to the table and listened to, and if you have any questions, please reach out to the board members. We're here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Cleveland?
Not so fast, Old Northwood. I'll respond to you in a moment. Mayor Commissioners, I apologize I was late for the CRA meeting. I had some public comments. I would ask that you receive them at this time. Need a study on Spruce Avenue resurfacing. CRA Advisory Board meeting is on, on, online. I would ask that it be held on a live format as, as used to be at the fire station. A lot of people are not able to get online and have some comments. The sidewalk cafe or tables, the ordinance is not being respected. And also the parking on Northwood Road, there's a cafe that since the COVID, they occupied three spots, and I think they should be moved by now. Now, for Northwood. Northwood exhibit more racism than any community in this city. Always has been and probably always will be. When you close off the road in Northwood, you come through Pleasant City. So whatever they're doing, I don't know what makes them so special. Every time something happens in this city, Northwood is down here, and they get their way. I don't know what makes them special. When the police chief first came on, on board, first thing they wanted to have is a police presence up there. Now, you see 100 cars that are almost all the time. What makes them special? Please tell me. They are citizens just like everybody else in this city, should be treated equally. For some reason, they're not. They are the most, exhibit the most racism in this city, in that community. Yeah, I said it, and I say it again. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Colin Rayner, Tom O'Brien, and Reed Robinson.
My name is Colin Rayner. I'm a visitor right now to West Palm Beach. Love coming back every year. I was the founder of the Old Northwood Neighborhood Association in 1986 and spent many, many hours at the old city commission chamber with 300 people, residents almost every Monday night with city commission every week. And anyways, limited access happened. Nancy Graham, the first strong mayor, used to say to us, "You're my model neighborhood. You don't just identify problems, you come with solutions. You don't whine, and this is why we're here again tonight." I'm so proud. Every year I come back to West Palm, I love it here. I see such an improvement in Old Northwood. I can't tell you how, and of course, you know we were the first designated historic district in West Palm Beach. In those days, we did everything we could to improve and stabilize the neighborhood. No young families living there. The main issue was to cut through traffic. As you know, when people come down Broadway and they see a red light further south, Broadway was never finished into North Dixie, the way it was supposed to be in the 20s. So people see a red light, they turn, whatever street they happen to be on. And that was the problem. And in those days, they flew through our neighborhood. Limited access happened, people said it wouldn't work. It did work. Just look at the real estate property values in Old Northwood. Look at the quality of people. We're a rich, diverse neighborhood. Everyone's included, everyone's welcome. And Michael, are you still here? Michael Cleveland? Well, he was one of my favorite sparring partners at the time. Old Northwood is not a racist neighborhood. We have people of every ethnicity, every background. And, you know, we blocked 11 out of 22 ways into the neighborhood. That's all we wanted. We didn't want to be a limited, you know, gated community. Anyways, this is the problem. We're afraid of any precedent being set. We need to work with this developer, who basically is on the same page as we are. We shouldn't be fighting. We need the help of the city to come up with a good solution that will make sense for everybody. You don't want to destabilize Old Northwood. That would be a shame. And so I am asking for as much cooperation as possible. The board needs to meet with city staff again, relook at this issue, and come with, come up with some solutions that would make the city happy, Old Northwood happy, the developer happy. Okay, thank you, and I, I love being here and.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tom O'Brien?
Hello, City Commissioner and Mayor. Thank you for giving us time to speak tonight. My name's Tom O'Brien. I've lived at 50533rd Street since 1987. People who know the neighborhood know that our neighborhood has taken a lot of steps forward in those years, but we've had steps backwards. We fear tonight that we're about to take some steps backwards, and that's why we're here. Our understanding is that the developer originally intended for entrance to his property to be off of Broadway, but that he was actually advised by the city, perhaps partly because of FDOT, to have his entrance instead be on 33rd Street. He's completely willing, to my understanding, to have the blockage moved to west of the alley. So there's really a simple solution here, which is sort of fortunate. Sometimes these problems don't have simple solutions. This one seems simple. And then, just in general, I'm not a city planner, I'm not an expert on traffic, but my understanding is that we have a higher-density zoning area, the BMUD, next to a residential. And I'm just kind of wondering, what is the normal protocol here? In this case, we have the entrance to that higher density strictly coming through a residential neighborhood. I'm not sure if people here have understood that basically the 500 block of 33rd Street is going to be a driveway for that development. There's no other way to get there. It's that street. And that's, it doesn't seem right to me to have that in a residential neighborhood. We do support growth on Broadway. We don't want to stand in the way of that. We know that that's been a, a long sought goal by the city. It's a goal of ours, too. But we think the traffic coming only through our neighborhood to get to that development is an unfair burden for us to have to bear. So we've worked with the city before. Colin has worked with the city, the neighborhood. I've been associated with the Neighborhood Association for 30 years, and we've had a lot of great successes. We're asking that you work with us again and let us have another good success here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reed Robinson? Reed Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. Two years ago.
Take your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Reed Robinson. I live at 51233rd Street. Two years ago, my, my then-girlfriend and I were living in Fort Lauderdale, and we had gone up and down the coast from, as far as St. Augustine, really looking for places. And we found our place at 51233rd Street. It's just a beautiful Mediterranean revival that needed some work on a sleepy, quiet street in what's generally a sleepy, quiet neighborhood. It was perfect. We got married, my son was born two weeks ago, and we're so excited to be in this neighborhood. I can see him growing up there on a quiet, quiet street. My neighbor Doug lives right across the street from me. Frankie lives three houses aside. We meet in the street sometimes twice a week. There isn't much traffic on our street right now. You go one street over to Spruce, cars get fast. You go two streets over to Point Setia, and somebody else said it, it's a drag strip. And it is. I would really ask the commission to try to find some other way to give access to this without having it only be accessible through 33rd. We really have something special there, and I'd really hate to lose it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Wood Canard?
Good evening. I'm David Wood Canard. I live at 43230th Street and also 44430th Street. I, out of respect, I was going to not speak, but I'll just simply say, on Saturday morning, if you look out inside my house, you will see this wonderful contingencies of tricycles, carriages, mother, young mothers and fathers on their bicycles going down as if they were having a parade. You can't buy that. So I yield the floor to the mothers and children who've already spoken on behalf of our neighborhood. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, that's the last card. Mr. Fana, see if you could set up a meeting between me and the developer and, you know, get better educated on this, and perhaps even the district commissioner. Obviously, we can't meet together because of sunshine, but.
Yes, Mayor, we'll, we'll discuss with staff, with the developers, see what the options are.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, Commissioners, it's time for comments from members of the dais. We'll start with you, President Fox.
Thank you so much. I want to start by thanking all of you for coming out tonight. It's a hard act to follow, but I really appreciate that you're such good advocates for your neighborhood, and I would be happy to take a walk with you, and I hope that, Mr. Fana, that you can. Hopefully, that our administration can update all of us on any of the plans or suggestions that, that you might find. I'm definitely willing to work with you in any way to find solutions. So thank you all for coming out tonight. I also wanted to ask our administration just about one other question that came up during public comment about the 500-block closures. It's not something that I'm involved in, in those contracts, but is it something that is coming up for renewal? I know that we had someone here talking about 85% of the businesses needing to agree, so I don't know what the process is or if there's, what the timeline is.
We're, we're actually in the process of reviewing that now.
Thank you. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit the traveling exhibit for the Palm Beach County Virtual African-American Oral History Project at the Salvation Army in the Northwest Community Center. It was actually produced by Dr. Alicia Nguyen, who works with us at the CRA. And there will be another upcoming exhibit in West Palm on Friday, February 24th, at 11:30 at the Fulton Holland Educational Services Center. That's the school district building. I just wanted to invite everyone to visit that. But in the meantime, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the project. It is a partnership between the Palm Beach County School District and the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County, and it was produced by Alicia Nguyen. She wanted to have the opportunity to talk to eight elders that were representing Delray Beach, West Palm Beach, Belglade, Pahokee, and Riviera Beach, and they were all virtually interviewed by five young researchers about growing up in, in Palm Beach County. Two interns came from Palm Beach Atlantic University, and this all happened during COVID, so they had to do it virtually. But it was a really interesting exhibit where you got to learn a little bit about the elders. There was a 10-minute documentary that was produced, and that is available to watch online at ConsiderTheCulture.com, and I would highly recommend it. But in the meantime, I also just wanted to introduce you to two of the elders who are from West Palm Beach, just to tell you a little bit about them, especially during Black History Month. Mary J. Lopez was born in West Palm Beach, Florida in 1928, and is one of five siblings. She lived in Palm Beach County her entire life. Ms. Lopez worked at a dress store in downtown West Palm Beach called Anthony's. She obtained her beauty license from Roosevelt High School and opened up her beauty salon on Sappadilla between 9th and 10th Street. Ms. Lopez witnessed the prosperity of black-owned businesses in West Palm Beach. She also saw how these businesses started to close down over time as the city tried to commercialize the area. Ms. Lopez was a frequent visitor to the Sunset Lounge in the historic Northwest, and she participated in neighborhood events such as beauty contests. When asked about her neighborhood life in Palm Beach County, she said she really didn't have what you would call real rights. You had to do what was the method of, of doing things. In other words, we knew what we could do and we knew what we couldn't do. Elizabeth Stubbs Munnings was born and raised in West Palm Beach in 1926. She became a teacher for the Palm Beach County School District and taught throughout the county. In addition, Ms. Munnings held school administrative positions such as assistant principal and dean of students. She saw how racism still permeated at the integrated schools. During one year of her tenure as assistant principal, she was assigned a closet with no windows as an office. After her years as an educator, she became part of a group called Savour Women. This group gathered data from the Northwest Historical Value as a neighborhood, and Ms. Munnings went to Tallahassee to present the neighborhood's value. This information went all the way to Washington, and the neighborhood became the Northwest Historic District. Ms. Munnings was one of the first members of the West Palm Beach Historic Committee. Her advice to youth is to be the very best that you can be and to do those things that will enhance your life and make you a better person. We, we don't have to sit back because someone said you were supposed to sit back. We can learn and make ourselves do the things that we know that's correct to do and do it in a nice, bold way. So again, I just wanted to give everyone a little flavor of this project. It's ConsiderTheCulture.com if you want to learn more, and they are also on Instagram. And I just really applaud this, all the work that has gone into it. I also wanted to just share that this week, we will be having another police department, the North End Police Chief Meeting on February 8th, Wednesday, at 6:30 PM. eighth, Wednesday, at six-thirty PM at Gaines Park for anyone who lives in the North End and wants to come just to hear from the chief about the progress that's being made and report any issues that you're having. We also previously had those meetings set up for the downtown, but due to lack of attendance, we put them on hold. But I talked to the chief today, and we are planning another meeting soon. I know that I'm getting a lot of calls, especially about the noise downtown, and that is all I have tonight. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Baduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to address the sad passing of retired K-9 Thor and extend my personal condolences to Thor's handler, Officer Jim Sniffin, and his family. K-9 Thor served admirably this city and its residents for a number of years, and just wanted you to know that, that my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family, Officer Sniffin. The IBIS Food Drive, Charity Food Drive, thank you to my colleagues. I think every one of my colleagues was there, and we certainly appreciate all of your hard work in assisting with the collection of, of over thirty thousand pounds of food that will go to the most needy of our residents and residents in Palm Beach County. So thank you to my colleagues. I had good news. I attended the County Commission Meeting last week regarding the widening of North Lake Boulevard. They proposed to widen North Lake right around our IBIS development to eight lanes, four lanes in each direction, which we believed would really be disastrous to public safety. We already have a problem with speeding along North Lake Boulevard, and, and adding additional lanes of traffic would probably just, just compound the speeding problem. It's already kind of a mini highway. And so I presented to the County Commission, and my colleague with Palm Beach Gardens, Mayor Chelsea Reed, also presented to the County Commission, and we were, along with a number of residents from West Palm Beach and, and Palm Beach Gardens, also our city's engineer presented, and we were successful in getting the County Commission to vote six to one to block permitting of, or actually block the request for right-of-ways for the project. So the widening to eight lanes at least will not be occurring. So that was very good news. And then I just want to briefly address the suggestion that was made during the comment, public comments today, that I may have had some knowledge or information concerning the allegations that have been made against our deputy police chief. While I have no knowledge, or excuse me, no recollection of being present during any of these incidents that have led to these allegations, I'm sure she will correct my recollection if, if somehow I was present for something, but I can say this unequivocally, that I do not condone such behavior if, in fact, it happened. If the allegations are correct, I, I believe there should be a full and fair investigation, and that if the allegations are proven to be true, I think that, that appropriate action needs to be taken against any of those involved, including criminal charges if appropriate, and I would be happy to give my testimony under oath to any investigative agency that wants to have it. As I said, I don't have any recollection of, of being present for any of the, for any of the allegations that have made, but if, if I have anything to add, I would be more than happy to provide my testimony under oath. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank all of the Old Northwood residents for coming out. I agree with some statements that were made earlier. It is refreshing to hear positive comments that are directed towards creating positive change, and I applaud you all for being involved and engaged, and look forward to the report from staff, as well as how we might be able to work with you all. Wanted to provide an update as Palm Beach County has been working on what's called Tarpon Cove, which are the man-made islands that are in our intercoastal, just on the outside of the El Cid neighborhood area. I had the chance to take my niece and nephew out there to help plant some great, we, with a group, we planted three hundred mangroves and over two thousand pieces of Sprotina grass, and they'll be continuing doing these projects, and it's just great for helping the birds, the fish, the wildlife, as well as protecting our seawall. So I'm just happy that that project is continuing. I thought that it was interesting that 211 presented, and I doubt that they knew that school district would also be presenting, but both touched on the importance of mental health awareness in our community. And last night, I had the opportunity to attend the Albert Jewish Family Services Annual Event, and they really focused on mental health. And since we had such a large crowd here, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to just encourage you to reach out to any friends or family members who, if you ever notice that they're suffering. They offered these four suggestions to help start a conversation about mental health. Number one, are you okay? Number two, are you thinking about suicide? Number three, do you want to take a walk? To encourage, to get them out of whatever situation might be causing them to be upset. And then number four, how are you really? And just encourage us to continue those conversations. I love what was said about meeting your neighbors outside, on the street, just having those great conversations. Wanted to applaud the city for our events and efforts to celebrate Black History Month in February. There's a, a great list of activities going on, everything from a Black lecture, a literature lecture series, to activities that you can have grab-and-go kits to do Black History Month collage art, as well as children and family storytime celebrating Black History Month. So all this is listed on our website. Encourage you all to take a look. And then finally, I serve as the city's representative on the TDC Board, and we recently had the state of tourism industry in Palm Beach County, and I just wanted to report some stats and some numbers that were reported there. Our total visitation is up thirty-one percent from 2021. Our total economic impact is up thirty-three percent, so that's up nine-point-seven billion dollars. I'm sorry, that's not up. It was, that's the total amount. But this event allowed all of our tourism stakeholders to come together, to be aware of the impact of tourism in Palm Beach County. And if you're not aware, tourism is the second-leading economic driver in our community behind agriculture. And finally, I just wanted to let my colleagues know and the public know that the TDC is moving forward with a request for proposals. We will be creating a tourism master plan, and I look forward to reporting on the progress of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. It is nice to see all my Northwood people. I'm, I'm not a resident of Old Northwood. I'm Northwood Gardens. Maybe one day I'll get a Facebook invite to your cool Facebook page, or your Facebook group. One day. That was just a, you know, a small plug. Just, just to clarify, because, you know, you guys are a leader in the community, and, you know, this past Saturday, I went to Northwood Hills' historic home tour, and I know they work closely with your board, and I don't know if some of you in the room went to that, but it was phenomenal. And I know you guys, while they worked fantastically to make that event a great return to their community, I know it was with your board's help as well. And so thank you for that community engagement and work alongside to make all of our neighborhoods the best in the area. I have, I think at least, I've been pretty responsive since I first heard about this. I've, you know, obviously spoken to TK many times on this issue, your current president, Anthony, on it. I just wanted to share, I think that there was some confusion, and while staff is, you know, Mr. Andrew Johnson was pulled in almost immediately, staff has been looking at this. I think there was some confusion on the, on the wording for curb cuts, because I think as you most know, or most of you know, they did come to you guys. They did ask. You guys signed, your board signed a resolution saying that they didn't want Thirty Third open, and that they would, don't quote me, they acknowledged that there would be increased traffic. However, I think the problem is, is not everybody realized that that meant that it wouldn't be pushed back on the west like you guys are suggesting. And so I think staff's response to no curb cut was talking about direct access from Broadway into a driveway, which they're trying to avoid continuously. And so they are looking at right now exactly what you guys are talking about, moving it back west, and that way, they can go in and out on Thirty Third. So I think that that, and, and again, when she, when staffer responded to me, I did get confused as well. I said, well, then how would you have been able to open Thirty Third anyways if they had supported it two years ago? And the response was no, they were talking about direct access to and from Broadway, which would cause an issue. No, you know, nobody wants a bunch of traffic coming in and out without turning lanes and things like that. And so they are looking at it. Stay tuned. I will continue to update and continue to ask questions because I know it's important, and it does set a precedent for what's to, hopefully, to come as we see more development in the area. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. But again, I'm glad you guys came here tonight, because I'm seeing new faces. And because you guys are also here, it's a good news, it's another opportunity to spread the word. Bright Line Phase Two testing will start Saturday, February eleventh, daily between seven AM and four PM. So we will have some noise going on, but it's a month of noise, and that means that we're testing the quiet zones. So tell your neighbors, it, you know, you have to test something in order to make sure it's safe enough to be quiet. So just bear with the noise. We're apologize. If you remember it happening downtown like I do, it was loud. So I'm sorry. I, I am glad that it wasn't right around our coal front, because many people had their windows open, and that would have even been worse. So just bear with us, and hopefully letting people know, don't go on the tracks, don't cross the tracks, don't hang. I mean, we just, we really have to be safe in order to keep these quiet zones from lasting long. And then also, Coleman Park Renaissance Groundbreaking is happening on Wednesday, this Wednesday, at four on Tammeran Avenue Corridor, and, and that is an affordable mixed-use development project. We're very excited to have come into the area, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge your, your speedy response to the complaints that were raised by a citizen and your wisdom to forward that complaint on to, for further investigation. Now, I would also like to say that an investigation could also provide an opportunity for redemption. We don't know what the outcomes will be, but I think that I can rest comfortably in knowing that the appropriate actions will be taken based on the information that we receive as a result of the investigation. I would like to acknowledge a scholarship opportunity by the League of Cities. William Kerchak Scholarship closes on February seventeenth. There are a couple of retire, requirements, a three-point-oh, grade point average is one. But we do, if you would like more information, please go to leagueofcities.org and download the application so that you could apply. I am happy to hear about the successful food drive at IBIS, and, you know, I just believe that together we achieve so much more, and it does take all of us working together as a community to support those that are in the greatest need. We know that a lot of people have been hit very hard in recent times, and we've had increasing rents, we've had increasing insurances, we've had so many, increasing egg prices. We have so many challenges throughout our country, throughout our city, and we've just been seeing so many people doing more with less. And that doing more with less also includes our nonprofit organizations. And so it's definitely, it definitely takes private entities coming together to support our community and to support our nonprofits. So I encourage you to volunteer your time and your resources to the agencies in our community that are serving our, our citizens. So many people have been impacted. One of the areas that I've seen an increase is through our animal care and control, Peggy Adams, and our, our big dog rescue and shelters and different things like that, where people have been forced to surrender a family member or that they, or a pet that they consider a member of their family, because times are just so hard, and they're pulling so hard on their purse strings. So I'm asking everyone, if you have the opportunity to support by volunteering, please do so. If you have the opportunity to support through finances, that's also a wonderful option. But if you're, if you're in a position to adopt, I encourage you to adopt a pet from one of our shelters because they are at capacity, and we do not want to see the alternative occur because they cannot accommodate any more pets. Here at the city, we take community very seriously, and one of the resources that we have is our vicar's house. Our vicar's house offers so many resources to people throughout the community, and with this upcoming tax season, providing free tax services is one of the things that they're doing. And I encourage you, if you meet the, the right household income levels, that you do seek our vicar's house for support in filing your taxes. And for those that tune in to our wonderful city commission meetings that don't reside in the city, the county offers a similar service. We all are aware that we are currently in Black History Month. Black History Month was started by Carter G. Wilson, a historian, and he was the first person to come up with the idea. Carter G. Wilson organized Negro History Week in February of nineteen-twenty-six. And from Negro History Week, the Civil Rights and Black Power Movement advocated for an official shift from Negro History Week to Black History Month, also called African-American History Month. President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month in nineteen-seventy-six, and President Joe Biden proclaimed February twenty-twenty-two as National Black History Month, and the bill was signed on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two into legislation. And I'd just like to encourage you to continue to do all of the things that you're doing, to recognize the importance of working together, recognizing the importance of community. I had the opportunity, I was invited by Michael Odom from our Housing Authority to attend an event alongside Commissioner Kathleen Ward, and within that meeting, we had people, we had our Senator Bobby Powell, County Commissioner Matt Bernard, we had people from our city, Jennifer Ferrell, we had our chief of police. We had so many people that participated and were a part of that conversation, and it was centered around homelessness and the different things that are impacting the community as a result of our homelessness. So I just want to say that when you continue to work together and you continue to involve us, we are listening, and we want to be a part of the solution. So continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me, first of all, thank all of you for showing up. This is democracy at its finest, and there will be some follow-up meetings, and we'll see how those conversations go, but you will certainly be kept abreast of the progress and certainly through the District Commissioner and my office. Also want to commend the IBIS community for the food drive. That was quite an accomplishment, and it is great to see members of our community who are certainly more well-off than others, thinking about those who do not have as much as they would like in, in giving back. So kudos to the IBIS community. I was in Washington, DC last week, meeting with Congress people and two state senators, as well as members of the Intergovernmental Department of the current administration to articulate some needs that the city has, and all meetings went very well. And so we are certainly on their radar in terms of some assistance from the federal government for some significant priorities, including mental health issues, as well as sustainability and resilience issues. Commissioner Ward mentioned the groundbreaking, which is this Wednesday at four, for the Coleman Park Renaissance Project. It's a nineteen-and-a-half-million-dollar investment, which is comprised of forty-three one, two, and three-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments that will serve very low to low-income residents. Community members are welcome to attend and learn more about this exciting project. As we are all well-aware, essential housing continues to be a vital need everywhere, and we are so excited to bring these additional units to our city. On Saturday, February eleventh, from ten to two, Chief Diana Matty and the West Palm Beach Fire Department will host an open house for Fire Station Eight. That station is located at ten-nine-six-five North Lake Boulevard. That's one-zero-nine-six-five North Lake Boulevard. The event will include blood pressure screenings, photo ops with our firefighters and the trucks, the chance to meet your firefighters and fire chief, as well as some K-9 rescue dogs. So we hope to see everyone there. Just a reminder that City Hall and the Mandel Library will be closed on Monday, February twentieth, and- 20th in observance of President's Day. On Tuesday, February 21st, City Hall will reopen at 8:00 AM, and the library will reopen at 9:30 AM, and sanitation services will be provided as normally scheduled. That's all I have, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.